I'd like to have Mr. Cotton give us our invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Tonight, as we declare October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we pray for our community, our community dedicates themselves to be supportive of survivors and play an active role in ending domestic violence. Father, we pray for the men and women in our armed forces who serve our country with tremendous courage, commitment, and sacrifice. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. We will continue to thank you and praise you for the blessings you have bestowed upon us. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here tonight, hear us in a moment of silence. Amen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'd have Ms. Sharon Russell read the page for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome our elected officials tonight. Sheriff Hans Miller, thank you, sir, for being here, and Register of Deeds, Becky Pollard, thank you, Ms. Pollard, for being here tonight. We ask all in attendance to please set your cell phone to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public two opportunities to speak during the meeting. Comments during the first public comment period should be limited to three minutes each and must be directly issue-oriented with the agenda items for this particular meeting. The second public comment period is at the end of the meeting and may be on any issue which the Board of Commissioners has control of. During the second public comment period, citizens can address the Board for up to five minutes each. Citizen speakers will be acknowledged in order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the Board as a whole and not one individual Commissioner. Speakers will address the Board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Discussion between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or candidacy shall not be allowed. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules and procedures, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner comment period on the agenda. With no other items being considered separately, a motion to adopt the meeting agenda is in order. Some of them, I hear, a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any Commissioner would like to have removed and placed at the end of the agenda for consideration?
Motion to approve.
Hearing none, I ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number three is Public Comment Section. Mr. Cotton, has anyone signed up for the first part?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is the first public comment period in accordance with the Commissioners' or Board's adopted rules and procedures, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner comment period on the agenda. Comments should be limited to three minutes each and must be directly issue-oriented with the agenda items for this meeting. The sole speaker is Ms. Charlotte Rodriguez of 201 Lansing Court, Jacksonville, and it is in reference to Agenda Item 5A, which is Onslow County Incidents and Trends Report. Ms. Rodriguez?
I am Charlotte Rodriguez. I live in Jacksonville, North Carolina, been here about six years. We all know that the use of tobacco products is the most preventable way that we can stop premature death. Right now, I'm here to talk to you about our use of tobacco. It's an epidemic. It's not just across the United States, it's right here in our backyard. Now, I did send a note to Commissioner Bright, and I appreciate your answer, sir, but I need to know, what are we doing? The Public Health Department recognized this a few years ago, and I think probably still recognizes it as a problem, but I need to know, what are we doing? Now, we appreciate what the federal government is doing, but they've been working on this ten years. This is a serious thing. These are our youth. I'm very fortunate, my children are grown, but I do have grandchildren. I also am the coordinator for the candy strippers at the hospital. I have an interest in our youth. I want to stop the use of tobacco products in whatever way we can. I need to know tonight what the Health Department is doing, what I can do to help. We know that the tobacco industry is targeting our young people. You know, with flavored tobacco products, we know for a fact, when you come up with a yummy, gummy, gummy flavor name and a nice flavor, that's not for an adult, that's for children. We need to stop that. And I'm also a volunteer with the American Cancer Society. We have legislation that we're asking on the Hill, but we need to know, what are we doing here locally? I appreciate your time, and I will be willing to serve in any way that I can to do whatever we can to stop this, but we do need to stop this use right now. We need to stop it before it starts. It's starting as early as middle school. That's not acceptable. I don't know what we're doing, but I know we need to do something. I have done a little research. It's hard to find research on what we're doing specifically here in Onslow County, but I'm still looking, but I need to know what we are doing and what can I do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Anyone else, Mr. Cotton? Okay, we'll move on with item four, presentation, with Ms. Cherie Berry.
I'll give you Cherie Berry in just a second, sir. Good evening, Board of Commissioners. The North Carolina Department of Labor Safety Awards Program recognizes private and public firms throughout the state who achieve and maintain good safety records. This program is designed to stimulate interest in accident prevention and to promote safety in the workplace by providing an incentive to employees and employers to maintain a safe and a healthful workplace. This program has been in operation since 1946 and now extends to more than 4,000 firms and 3,000 awards are presented each year. To qualify for a safety award that are being presented tonight, an employer must do two things: have had no fatalities during the calendar year at the site or the location for which the award is given, and have maintained an incidents rate at at least 50 percent below the average for that industry group. It's my pleasure to introduce the Honorable Cherie Berry, North Carolina's Commissioner of Labor, who will be presenting this evening's awards.
Would you prefer me here or there?
Which are more convenient?
I think I would.
That'd be fine.
I'd like to address them. That's why I'm here tonight, for them. Well, hey! I am so honored to be here tonight to present the safety awards to various departments of your county government. These awards are so important because you've earned them. You've worked very hard to earn these safety awards. Ursula and I don't ride around all over this beautiful state just handing out awards to anybody standing on the street corner. You've worked very hard for this, and Commissioners, they have worked very hard for these awards. And it's so important, if you're a taxpayer in this county, it saves money on workers' comp claims for taxpayers. So they're doing everybody a favor. Not only are they taking care of each other and making sure everybody goes home safe and healthy at the end of their workday to their families, they're also helping the taxpayers by actually saving lots of money when there are no accidents with employees. So when you see a county employee, thank them for the good work they're doing and for the money they're saving you by working safely. And you know, I thought about y'all tonight, and I've been here for a few years to present these awards, and I thought, how do I feel about these people in Onslow County, about these county employees? This is how I feel about them, and this is the highest compliment I can pay to all of you. I have children. How many have children? How many have grandchildren? All right. How many have great-grandchildren? Yay! I'm not by myself. How about y'all? All right, good. When I think about the people that I meet and the people Ursula and I work with in the safety program, I judge them this way. I say, those children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren are my most precious possessions. I would give my life for any of them. They are so precious to me. A lot of them are out working now. In fact, most of them are out working. And would I feel comfortable if they chose to work alongside of all of you? Would I feel comfortable handing over my most precious possessions to any of you every single day, hoping that you would protect them, look after them, take care of them at work, keep them safe, so they could come home to me? Would I feel comfortable doing that? And having known y'all for such a long time and have presented numerous awards over the years for safety to all of you, I can truthfully say that it would be indeed an honor and a privilege for me, as a mom, as a grandmother, and as a great-grandmother, to have any of my most precious possessions working alongside of any of you every single day, because you would take care of them and you would return them home to me, safe, at the end of that day. Thank you for being the kind of people you are. Thank you for caring about each other the way you do, and thank you, Mr. Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioners, for providing the resources and the support that your employees need in order to participate in a safe and healthy workplace. What a blessing it is for the county, so that's why I'm honored to be here tonight. So thank you, and may God bless all of you, and may God bless Onslow County, and may God bless America. So thank you so much for having me here tonight. Thank you. And now we have Ursula, and we have John, who are going to help give out these awards. So when your name is called, come up, get your award, and we'll take a photo. I want to congratulate each one of you personally. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Commissioners. It is my pleasure to present the safety awards for 2018, even though we're in 2019, for the hard work that they have done to maintain these safety records. We will begin with the safety awards. For the silver award, the only silver award we have is a first-year silver award, and it's for the asset and facilities maintenance. Please come forward. The next award is a gold award, where you reach this level with all of your no-loss-time accidents or injuries, and they have to be 50 percent below the industry average as well. For the first-year goal, we begin with information technology services. And vehicle maintenance, completing the first-year gold awards. For the second-year goal, we have an award for the airport. I'm not sure how we'll do this award. The next award is the third-year gold, and it's for communications. And I see she's taking pictures. It's good to see we can work together here in Onslow County. Let's give them a round of applause. For the fourth-year goal, we have an award for the governing body. Now, Commissioner said I don't just give those out willy-nilly, so you guys have to decide who gets to take it home with you. For the fifth consecutive year, we have a gold award for Consolidated Human Services. Also for a sixth-year goal, Planning and Development. For the ninth-year gold award, Tax Office. For the eleventh-year goal, Soil and Water. For the seventeenth-year goal, we start with Finance. I'm not sure if the camera could see what was happening, but Commissioner Berry is always in charge. Be sure. The next awards we have are twenty-third consecutive-year gold awards. The first is for Board of Elections. They were not able to have a representative here tonight, but we wanted to recognize them while we're here. And the last twenty-third-year award we have is for Veteran Services. We're so proud of all the recipients this year. We do thank you for allowing us to come, and we did miss coming to you last year, so we hope that you will invite us again next year, so that we can continue this tradition of safety in Onslow County. Thank you so much, and have a great evening.
I hope all you remember Commissioner Berry, if you ever get in the elevator in North Carolina, you'll see her picture, and you'll see her signature, because she has to sign off on all of them, so.
Can I give my piece of advice real quickly?
Yeah.
I'm not running for reelection, so my picture eventually will be out in the elevator, and my advice to you is, when you get in the elevator in the future and you don't see my picture, get out!
Thank you, Commissioner. It's a pleasure, a pleasure having you, and congratulations to all the recipients tonight for the awards. The little mix-up with the government part was my fault. I had asked Commissioner Buchanan to step down for the governing part, but I guess Mr. Cotton thought nobody was coming, and I didn't tell him, so I apologize to Mr. Cotton. I apologize to Commissioner Buchanan for that. Okay, we'll move on to Item B. We have two proclamations. Mr. Cotton, will you read those, and we'll have the individual Commissioners present them?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is where I can redeem myself here. So Representatives of the Onslow County Solid Waste Department will accept this proclamation, and the Chairman has requested that Commissioner Buchanan present the proclamation. I'll read it into the record. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, Proclamation, Recycle Right, North Carolina. Whereas single-stream recycling programs that emphasize the collection of cans, bottles, cardboard, and paper recovery, the highest tonnage most efficiently; and whereas recycling creates jobs, saves energy and water, gas emissions, preserves natural resources, and conserves landfill space; and whereas 51,000 households in Onslow County recycle more than 40,000 tons of recyclable products each year; and whereas the increasing amount of non-recyclable items or containments being placed in recyclable bins compromises the quality of truly recyclable materials; and whereas educating residents about which items go into the recycling containers is the most effective way to recover the most recyclable materials and avoid contamination; and whereas to focus the state's attention on the importance of reducing contamination in recycling, the North Carolina Department of Environment Quality has created the Recycle Right NC Campaign to educate the public on which items should and should not be placed in recyclable carts; and whereas participating in the Recycle Right NC Campaign is an effective way to raise awareness about the need to recycle only the items accepted by local recycling programs. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners do hereby pledge support and participation in the Recycle Right NC statewide campaign as an opportunity to contribute to a larger movement to improve recycling and lead the nation in recycling education through harmonizing messages. Onslow County Solid Waste Department will accept the proclamation, and Commissioner Buchanan will present it.
One of the things about recycling, I would just want to tell you that probably my recycling bins are full every two weeks. My trash bin probably has less than one-third of it every two weeks. So it tells you that it works. The thing about it is only 51,000 people in Onslow County. It's doing to be nice if we could get all 200,000 of us to recycle, it'd really be a big event for us. It'd be more jobs, more recyclable material, and less contaminants in our land. That means a whole lot to us. Tell us the stats.
Representatives of the Onslow County Women's Center will accept the proclamation. The Chairman has requested that Commissioner Price present the proclamation. I'll read it into the record. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, Proclamation, Domestic Violence Awareness Month 2019. Whereas domestic violence transcends racial, ethnic, and socio-economic borders, its perpetrators harm their victims, endanger children, traumatize families, and threaten communities; and whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and abuse; and whereas breaking this vicious criminal cycle requires not only the strength of survivors, but also the support and participation of community members; and whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is a time to reflect on the responsibilities of communities and citizens to build healthy, thriving families free from the threat of violence. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners do hereby acknowledge October 2019 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and call upon all citizens to stand firm in condemning domestic violence and supporting survivors of these crimes in finding the safety and recovery they need. the safety and recovery they need. Representatives of the Onslow County Women's Shelter will accept the proclamation.
Domestic violence seems to have a ripple effect across the entire families of negative consequences, and according to the North Carolina State Bureau of Investigation, 57% of women were the ones who were victims of those domestic violence-related homicides in 2018. And so in Onslow County, we're fortunate to have a women's center where women can have a safe haven, that they can go when they feel threatened or they feel unsafe. And so we appreciate the Women's Center for all they do. They've got a fundraiser coming up, Dancing Stars, coming up in the next couple of weeks, and so that's a big fundraiser, so get out and support them. And so we thank you for all you do.
Thank you so much. And we have one of our dancers here tonight, but I won't call her out. Anyway, we want to thank the county commissioners, number one, for supporting the Onslow Women's Center. We've been around since 1982. We see more than 140 people in our shelter each year, women and children, but we take more than 1,000 crisis calls a year. Not everyone ends up in the shelter. And if it wasn't for the support of the county commissioners in this community, it would be hard to contribute all those services. And we invite all of the commissioners, give me a call, I'd be glad to give you a tour of the facilities and the services that we provide. But thank you so much.
I'd like to take a five-minute recess to allow the folks that got the awards to, and Commissioner Berry, to go ahead on to your next destination. And we'd like for all of you to stay if you want to, but if you don't want to and you want to leave, feel free to do so. Thank you. We adjourn for five minutes. Call the meeting back to order. So we'll move on now with Item Five. Elizabeth Junick.
Good evening, Chairman and Vice Chairman and Board of Commissioners. The Department of Public Health is responsible for the collection of information on a wide range of health-related issues. This is a public health core function and essential service. Presenting this information is also required by accreditation standards. This information is collected to help monitor and protect the health and well-being of the citizens of Onslow County and the state of North Carolina. Reporting this data allows us to identify emerging health issues and trends in hopes of controlling and preventing the spread of infectious and communicable diseases. This report will review the statistics from the past year. Due to the serious threat, the North Carolina General Statute 130A, 135 through 139 require reporting of certain, actual, or even suspected communicable diseases to local health departments. The reporting timeframe is determined by the severity of the disease. Timely reporting is crucial in order for public health officials to detect common source outbreaks. For example, a physician may be treating a patient that has nausea and vomiting and diarrhea, and may not understand that that patient may be a bigger foodborne disease outbreak. But because we get multiple reports at the health department, we're able to see the big picture and realize that there may be something going on in our community that we may need to investigate. There are around 80 different reportable communicable diseases. Some examples are anthrax, meningitis, tuberculosis, whooping cough, syphilis, and Ebola. The Onslow County Health Department received and investigated 3,383 cases last year. The Health Department collects communicable disease reports from hospitals, laboratories, schools, local providers, and restaurants. Once a report is received, a communicable disease nurse puts the information into the electronic surveillance system, what we also call NC Eds, and this is a confidential reporting to the Division of Public Health. The Department of Public Health then sends that information to the CDC, and the CDC utilizes this information for statistical data for monitoring the nation. Sexually transmitted infections are behavior-linked diseases that are spread through sexual activity and blood. Women can also transmit those infections to their children during pregnancy, labor, or delivery. Sexually transmitted infections may cause many harmful complications such as infertility, fetal and perinatal health problems, cancer, and even death. The Health Department helps to assure that screening, early diagnosis, prompt treatment, and education of sexually transmitted infections are available to prevent complications and further transmission within the population. Chlamydia is the most prevalent sexually transmitted infection in the United States as well as in Onslow County. Chlamydia affects mostly young people ages 15 to 24. Chlamydia presents a significant challenge to public health since the majority of individuals that have chlamydia don't know that they have it. But it can cause pelvic inflammatory disease, which can make it hard to become pregnant. It causes damage to the woman's reproductive system, making it difficult or even impossible to become pregnant. In an effort to help control the spread of the infection, the state of North Carolina has allowed expedited partner therapy. We also call that EPT. This program allows us to give prescriptions or medications to the person that's infected so that they can take it home and give it to their partner. And reinfection from the partner is very high, so this has been a great thing that we can do for our community. Gonorrhea is the second most prevalent sexually transmitted infection in the county and shares a lot of similarities with chlamydia. It too often occurs without symptoms or very mild symptoms, and if left untreated can cause pelvic inflammatory disease, internal abscesses, and even infertility. The most common age range for gonorrhea in our area is between 15 to 39. Syphilis is another concern this year. There has been a striking increase in the prevalence of syphilis in Onslow County. This year, there were 34 cases reported, which is a significant 29.4% increase from last year. I don't know if you remember last year, this is one of the slides that I told you that was very important and that concerned me. I didn't know that it could get as bad as it has, but it's a very scary disease. A lot of times if somebody has syphilis for a long period of time, they'll get a form of dementia, which we cannot, you know, we can treat their syphilis, but we can't reverse that. It is treatable if it is detected early. Access to early screening and detection, preventive education, and treatment is critical. This includes women who are at risk for pregnancy to prevent congenital syphilis. We monitor for HIV and syphilis cases, because most often 50% of those cases are HIV-positive as well. In 2018, Onslow County tested 2,581 individuals through the state lab for HIV. Of those tested, there were 10 newly reported HIV infections compared to the 18 cases from last year. We see declines in HIV cases due to the effective education, prevention, and treatment being provided. Testing for HIV and AIDS remains a high priority for our health department. HIV testing is a crucial part of prevention and is the first step in connecting a patient to any treatment or preventive services that they may need. This is just a slide that shows you the total STD cases in Onslow County, and as you can see, the chlamydia and gonorrhea are the ones that we see most often. Tuberculosis is a potentially serious infectious disease caused by a bacterium called Mycobacterium Tuberculosis. This bacteria is spread from one person to another through tiny droplets when the person is infected, and they cough or sneeze. If not treated properly, the TB disease can be fatal. There are two types of related conditions. The first one is latent TB, and that just means that the TB infection is in their system. Then the second is TB disease, which means that they also have the TB bacteria, but it's multiplying in the body, and the immune system is unable to stop them from growing. The people who have TB disease have high fevers, they cough up blood, they have muscle wasting, and they are actively able to spread the bacteria to people they come in contact with, so we're very aggressive when we have clients with TB. The TB treatment is very complex, though, however. It requires multiple medications that are given over a six-to-nine-month period, you know, depending on the severity of the disease. In 2018, a total of 9,029 new tuberculosis cases were reported in the United States, which represents a .7 decrease from the previous year. In Onslow County, we see the numbers of active TB disease have declined from five cases in 2015 to just one active case this past year. Also, the number of latent TB cases has decreased from 50 cases in 2017 to 44 cases in 2018. Foodborne illnesses, also called food poisoning, is an infection or irritation of the gastrointestinal tract caused by food or beverages that contain harmful bacteria, parasites, viruses, or chemicals. The most common examples of foodborne illnesses include Salmonella, Norovirus, E. coli, Campylobacter, and Listeria. Foodborne illnesses tend to be under-reported, most in part because people that get a foodborne illness, it doesn't last very long, and a lot of times they don't seek medical advice. The CDC estimates that 1 in 6 Americans gets sick from a foodborne illness, and 128,000 are hospitalized each year. For Onslow County, we investigated an average of six cases per month, with Salmonella being the most prevalent, followed by Campylobacter. Vectorborne diseases are illnesses that are transmitted by vectors, which can include mosquitoes, ticks, and fleas. These vectors carry bacteria and viruses which can then be transferred to a human host through its bite. Some examples of mosquito-borne illnesses are West Nile virus, malaria, and Zika. Onslow County investigated 10 cases of Zika virus this past year, none of which were confirmed. Some examples of tick-borne illnesses are Rocky Mountain Spotted Fever and Lyme's Disease. Reported this year were nine cases of Rocky Mountain Spotted Fever and two cases of Lyme, both of which have decreased from the previous year. State and local health departments have the primary responsibility for identifying and investigating both foodborne and vectorborne diseases. With this responsibility, the Health Department is able to serve and protect its citizens through surveillance, execution of practices to better detect and prevent these types of diseases. Rabies is a fatal but preventable virus, spread through the bite or scratch from rabid animals. Rabies is found in both wild and domestic animals, and has the highest death rate caused by a virus. In Onslow County, our Health Department works very closely with Animal Services to conduct animal bite exposure surveillance. For the 2018-2019 fiscal year, there were a total of 447 bites reports that were reported to the Health Department. The majority of these bites were from dogs and cats. Of these various exposures, there were 40 animals that were sent to the state lab for testing, and there were a total of five animals, four wild animals, and one domestic animal that tested positive for rabies. The number of individuals who received what we call post-exposure prophylaxis was 29. Both the Health Department and Animal Services work collaboratively to make sure that individuals exposed receive immediate care and follow-up. The Onslow County Health Department works diligently to achieve full immunization coverage for all citizens in the county. We work with pediatric and primary care providers, as well as community health care centers throughout our county, to achieve this goal. We provide several vaccination outreaches to the community in order to better facilitate access to certain vaccinations, such as influenza, pneumonia, and required school vaccines. This past year, there was one influenza-related death in Onslow County, as well as one death from meningitis. The widespread increase in numbers of measles cases in the United States is at an all-time high since the disease was eradicated in 2000. In 2018, there were three reported cases of measles in North Carolina, which was brought on by an unvaccinated traveler who spread the disease to his two unvaccinated family members. There were no fatalities in any of these specific cases. The growing hesitancy to vaccine children has allowed once eradicated diseases like measles to creep back into the United States. Several U.S. cities have had measles outbreaks, including New York, Texas, and California, with over 1,100 cases being reported. In 2019, there have been no cases of measles reported in North Carolina. Anyone who is not protected against measles, including children too young to be vaccinated, are at risk of getting sick. In 2018, Ebola was declared as a public health emergency of international concern. The Ministry of Health of the Democratic Republic of the Congo declared an outbreak of Ebola in August of 2018. Since that time, there has been a total of 2,731 cases and 1,813 deaths reported. The national incidence of hepatitis A increased due to several large outbreaks during 2018. The number of cases climbed from 42 reported in 2013 to 101 cases reported in 2018. Infections among certain high-risk populations made up the majority of outbreak cases, including people who use IV drugs and those experiencing homelessness. For fiscal year 2018-2019, there were a total of 447 bite reports in Onslow County, representing a 38.5% increase from last year, which was 273. In conclusion, public health is of utmost importance to ensuring the well-being of Onslow County citizens. It provides communicable disease prevention, education, treatment, and control services to reduce the severity and progression of disease. Timely disease reporting to the public health system is imperative to quickly mobilize public health investigation and response efforts. It is evident from a long history of success that public health interventions work and can stop the spread of disease. Any questions?
The first speaker at public comment period earlier in the meeting, they spoke on Item Five, which was your report, but I don't see anything in here that relates to what her speech was about, about smoking.
Right.
But I guess I would ask you, do we have any programs for stop smoking, or vaping, or any kind of trends to address that issue?
Well, within our clinics, we always provide smoking cessation counseling, but we do have a lot of other things going on, which is not my area. I do have Victoria here that is doing a lot of things within the Health Department. That is something we can get more information for you, but we do a lot of smoking cessation. We even have one of our nurses that went to training this year to be able to provide counseling.
A lot of people that were smoking tobacco products before they were given an option to take some type of medicine to keep control of smoking, and then there were some thought that, you know, doing the vapor, vaping, and then now we're hearing all the things on the news about certain products that's good for you or not good for you, so. on the news about certain products that's good for you or not good for you. So I didn't, is that gonna be a trend, or that we're gonna have to address, or?
It's been my experience in all my studies in public health.
I don't mean to put you on the spot.
That's fine. I like talking about public health. It's been my experience that public health law is something that's very slow to change. I know in Michigan, they're one of the first states that have made vaping illegal. I wouldn't be surprised if there was something that would come this way, hopefully as we see people trying to aggressively do something about this situation, because it is extremely scary.
Have a question. I appreciate you, the briefing, it's very informative. I really do like it. I got a question, though. I don't know if I heard you right or not. I was going through, taking notes. Did you say that there's a vaccine now, Al? I mean, we have an influenza vaccine, but vaccine for meningitis, measles, Ebola, and HEPA?
We don't.
That would be bacterial meningitis, correct? I mean, is there a vaccine?
We do have a vaccine that covers some meningitis, but not all meningitis. But the one that passed away this year, we had a Marine that passed away because of meningitis that had not been vaccinated.
What about Hep C? I mean, isn't there a vaccine for Hep C, if I'm not mistaken?
There is a treatment for Hep C. Immunization is not my strong point there. You want to come up?
This is Giacinda Morris. She's my nurse manager, my right hand.
No, hepatitis C, we don't have a vaccine available right now. I mean, it's not a vaccine being developed for that. It's treatment that they have done a lot of research and have reached a lot of accomplishments in treating the hepatitis C, but so far, it's not a vaccine for Hep C.
The reason why I was asking, because when I was working for the government, they, I guess I went for, they had to look at my titers because I had to take a Hep C. I don't know, was that for Hep C, or was that for?
Hep B, probably.
Hep B? Okay, is that what it is?
Yeah, we do, a lot of employment places, they require titers for hepatitis B, Varicella. They look first at your short record, and if you don't have the vaccines, then they recommend to have the titers, which prove if you have immunity, if you have had the vaccine, then the title will be negative, so showing immunity.
I'm just curious.
The treatment for Hep C, I think it was around $80,000. It's pretty expensive.
How much? $80,000 to treat Hep C?
Yes.
Don't get it. Well, I don't intend to, though.
Definitely.
Individual case?
Hmm.
Does the Marine Corps Base report communicable diseases to us, so these numbers include on the base?
All the ones that have been reported to us, yes. We work very closely with them.
We had, and I'll be real brief, we had a joint meeting with the city council last week, and we had an update on the crisis center and why people were brought to the crisis center, and I found it amazing that alcohol abuse was rated higher than opioid. And I just thought that was shocking with the problems we have with opioid, but there we have alcohol that's a legal substance to purchase, and tobacco products that's a legal substance to purchase, and vaping is a legal substance to purchase. So we have little control over what can be bought. It has to be regulated by the state and federal government, and I guess the EPA plays a part of that also, but until they can step in, I don't see where Brett, is something that the county can do, or?
Not that, no, Chairman. I think this is a state and federal issue being addressed.
Vaping thing, though. If my understanding right is from the vaping, a lot of it's oil-based, a lot of it's THC, it's black market-type liquids that these kids are getting into, convenience store-type, and then they're heating up this oil that's in the vape mixture, which can cause hydrogen cyanide and things like that. Is that true?
We're gonna bring up the whole family.
Might as well just stay there.
I can speak if that's true. I know there's a lot of research that's being done. Whitney Jezek, one of our child health nurse supervisor, she actually did a Q&amp;A session last week via social media. So what we're doing locally is utilizing our social media platform and our platform as the health department to educate the community, because right now, that's what we have at our disposal, and that's what we can do. Later this month, we're gonna be working with Jacksonville Youth Council and the City of Jacksonville to host an open discussion with our youth, again, as an effort to really educate them, ask questions, and just, you know, what are they seeing in the community, and how can we go a little further in our education? Because I think it was mentioned, you know, there's a lot of flavored, you know, flavored items, and they're cool, and there's all this other stuff that goes with why kids want to vape. So what can we do as a health department and locally to, you know, educate the kids in a better way, so hopefully to keep them away from vaping or substance abuse?
I will tell you, though, you know, what cracks me up is, or doesn't crack me up, that's a wrong choice of words. You know, we had that joint city meeting, and, you know, no offense, I'm not surprised at the alcohol-related situation. I mean, Jacksonville is probably one of the drunkest cities, you know, if they took, when they took a poll, as far as alcohol abuse, and I have a tendency to see more alcohol abuse, bar none, than anything else. The opioids, obviously, the meth, obviously, and the other illicit drugs, but, I mean, educators, are they out there? Do we have programs? I know my wife's heavily involved in that, as far as alcohol, because that's probably the number-one problem that we have in eastern North Carolina, or at least here in Onslow County, Jacksonville.
That is a part of our community health needs assessment and our community health improvement plans, is to work closely with community prevention, CSAP, and a lot of our other partners to be out in the community and actively be working and educating our students, the parents, you know, on what to, when you're going into the grocery store, some of the labels and what to look for, you know, those fun labels, there's alcohol in there, and some parents might not know that.
No, that's interesting, that's for sure. That was a great report.
Any further commissioners?
Thank you so much. That was a very good report, and I didn't mean to put you on the spot about it, but we had a speaker.
That's fine.
We had a speaker earlier, and I thought if we had programs that I didn't know about, that maybe you could, you know, enlighten us on. And I'm sure there'll be things developing that will come about to address some of these problems.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Item B, release of Maisewell Fire and EMS vehicles. Our emergency management director, Norm Bryson, thank you, sir.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and County Commissioners. This evening, Maisewell Fire and EMS Incorporated is requesting that we release four vehicles from their contract that they hold with the county, so that they can either sell or give these vehicles away to another organization. Those four vehicles are a 1987 Chevrolet fire engine, a 2001 Ford F-450 ambulance, a 1952 GMC brush truck, and a 1996 GM SUV. The reason they're looking to reduce this fleet is because of the merger that they had with Belgrade and Loco, and all four of these assets were from the original Belgrade and Loco fire departments. By releasing these assets, they're able to reduce their fleet, which is one of the benefits that comes direct from a merger. Actually, by looking at these, as I was calculating in my seat just a moment ago, by then releasing these assets, Onslow County will have anywhere from $800,000 to $1 million that they will not have to replace in capital items by releasing these vehicles. Emergency Services is respectfully requesting that the County Board of Commissioners consider the release of the four listed vehicles from Maisewell Fire and EMS Incorporated from their contract, and if approved, authorize the chairman to sign the letter notifying them the release of the vehicle from the contract.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. C is hazardous mitigation grant, that's yours also, Mr. Bryson.
Yes, sir. After a major disaster such as Hurricane Florence, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program is one of those that comes available for communities, that they're able to apply for items to be able to help build up the resiliency of their community. Now, tonight, what we're asking for is not the approval of a grant, but the signing of documents to move us along into the next step of this grant process. And what we're looking for is actually two generators to go on two of our schools to help support our citizens when we have to stand our shelters up. What we're seeking out is a $1.9 million grant to help provide those generators, which will cover the entire facilities. We respectfully requesting the Board of Commissioners consider authorizing Mr. David Cotton and Ms. Sharon Russell to act as the applicant's agent for Onslow County, and if approved, authorize the chairman to sign all related documents on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes. I am glad that this come about, because, you know, after this last hurricane, we had to came in, the Swansboro High School, power went out for 24 hours, which I won't go any farther than that, because it's interesting that it goes out when there's no wind, no nothing, and all of a sudden, there's no power for 24 hours. But I went over to the high school, and it was devastating to me that we didn't have proper generators there to help with our, and it was our seniors, most of our seniors were in that shelter, and I'm glad that this has come about. Thank you.
And this will help to go to only two of our four primary shelters we have at this time.
Another thing, too, Dr. Barry Collins, superintendent of schools, can testify back there that most of the, a big portion of the damage that we had from the schools was no power after the storm, and then caused mold and mildew for nine days, that that stuff just sat in there and grew, and that caused a ton of more problems because they didn't have power, so.
Mr. Bryson, is there a reason why we're only doing two?
We do have certain limits that we have to be able to reach out. I mean, if we try to do all four, we're gonna be almost in the $4 million region. They are limiting us to how many that we can do and what we're moving forward with. There are other communities, currently, they're also identified generation is what they needed for their sheltering programs, and they're trying to divide that up around other communities as well.
Okay. Have a motion, and we've got a second on that.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Section D is yours also.
This third item that I have is the secondary debris removal hauling and disposal contract. Several months ago, Onslow County put out a bid looking to reevaluate our debris hauling and monitoring contracts. A few months ago, I came forward with you with a primary contractor, and this is for the secondary contractor, which is Crowder Gulf. This is a preposition contract that does not have any money that's tied to it essentially. They would be used in a situation where we felt the storm was large enough, we needed to bring in a second contractor, or we were not getting the services from the first one that we had in expectation. Emergency Services respectfully requesting that the Board of County Commissioners consider approval for the contract with Crowder Gulf, and if approved, authorize the chairman to sign the contract on behalf of the county.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? It's always good to have a safety net. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Animal Shelter Project Ordinance Amendment, our animal service director, Howard Martin. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, County Commissioners. During the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget, the Board of Commissioners approved funding to expand the animal services facility and renovate the portion of the existing building. Bids were solicited in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 143-129. The county received a total of five bids. The lowest responsible bid was in the amount of $3.8 million. Before a contract can be awarded, the project ordinance must be amended. The amount of the amendment is $755,000. Appropriation of the Capital Reserve Fund balance will be transferred to the project to fund the increase. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners, Commissioner, consider approval of the proposed increase to the animal shelter project ordinance in the amount of $755,000, and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents on behalf of the county.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, sir. Do you have item F also?
Yes, sir. During this fiscal year 1819 budget, the Board of Commissioners approved the funding to expand the current animal services facility, as well as renovate that existing portion of the building. As required by North Carolina General Statute, formal bids were solicited for the expansion and renovation. The county received five bids. After evaluating the bids received, it was determined that quadrant construction was the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. Attached, you will find a contract for the quadrant construction in the amount of $3,800,000 for the expansion and renovation project. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the approval of the contract to quadrant construction in the amount of $3,800,000, and authorize the chairman of the board to execute the contract documents. Approval of this contract was contingent upon the approval of the amended project ordinance and LGC approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Any questions? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Item six is Appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The first is the Onslow Civic Affairs Committee. Ms. Stephanie Malord has expressed an interest in appointment of a vacant seat on this committee and has provided a citizen participation application form. The application is on file and has been certified by the clerk's office. It is respectfully requested that the Commissioners consider the appointment of Ms. Stephanie Malord to seat five for a two-year term, expiring September 30, 2021.
Motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Nursing Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Marjorie Treadwell, her term has expired. She has expressed an interest in continuing service and has provided a citizen participation application form. The application is on file and has been certified by the clerk's office. It is respectfully requested that the Commissioners consider the reappointment of Ms. Marjorie Treadwell for a remaining three-year term, expiring August 14 of 2020.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We didn't move anything from the consent agenda, so now we at item eight, Public Comment section.
No one has signed up for the second public comment period.
Okay, we'll move on to item nine, Managers' Comment. Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I will be brief. This, coming up Monday, October 14, we do have a Commissioners' Workshop from 2:00 to 5:00. The three topics on the workshop agenda include the Commissioners receiving an overview of an emergency operations center, new facility, capital project, as well as solid waste, specifically the landfill expansions and improvements. We are looking towards a minimum of having to build a new cell, and there are other capital projects that we would like Commissioners' guidance on. And the third is to receive an overview demonstration of the recently certified boating machines. This will be the 50,000-foot view presentation, if any of the Commissioners are interested in receiving the full unabridged demonstration. They both, well, two of the three companies will be on-site Monday morning, the 14th, at the Board of Elections' office. The first will demonstrate at 9:00 a.m., and the second one will demonstrate at 10:30 a.m., roughly taking a little over an hour between each one. So if you're interested in attending that, just please let me know, I'll make sure that you have a seat at the table. I do plan on attending. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else? Okay, Commissioner comments, I'll start off with Commissioner Buchanan.
Thank you. Thank everybody for being here, and congratulations to all our safety awards, and have a safe trip home.
Commissioner Foster. Same thing, thank you, Commissioner Buchanan. Appreciate everybody's work, and congratulations on the safety award.
Appreciate everybody's work, and congratulations on the safety awards, and have a good evening.
Commissioner Knapp.
I echo what they said. Beth, thank you very much for the briefing, it was very informative. I'm sorry we asked a lot of questions. I'm sorry the chairman put you on the spot, but...
About that.
But also, I just want to really quickly just talk about the detox center again. I know it's falling on deaf ears, but we have our oversight committee. We're very busy, or the detox center is very busy, which is not a good sign, but it's a good sign for us, in the sense that we're addressing the problem, and we're taking steps forward. I think it's working out fine. We had a joint meeting with the city, and they seem to be on board with everything that we're doing, so I'm very, very proud of everybody's efforts, once again, Cherry, for all the hard work, and hopefully it'll be a success, and continued success in the future. Other than that, congratulations to all the awardees that won tonight, and that's, that's quite an accomplishment, and I just want to thank everybody for coming out, and we'll see you next time.
Thank you. Commissioner Bryce?
I'd like to thank Northwoods Park Middle School for invitation to come out and, for an event called Gentleman Equality. About 18 to 20 young, middle school young men signed a contract to commit to be, being a gentleman of quality, and with all that, that doing, giving their best and excellence in the classroom, and being a gentleman in public and that type of thing. And so it was, it was a good event, got a chance to kind of shake hands, and fist bump, and high fives, kids as they're coming down the hall, so it was good. So I thank them for that. Also, I'd like to thank Congressman Greg Murphy for coming down to Jacksonville and meeting with us, and giving us the opportunity to provide him with some feedback on some things that concern us, that we're the third district, and where the congressman can assist us in helping the people of Onslow County as well. Other than that, have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Shanahan?
I would just say, as it relates to the animal services expansion and renovation, with that bid coming back higher than what we had initially budgeted for and hoped for, you know, we've seen something similar happen over on the school board side with the schools, new school constructions that we put out. I'm afraid that may be a growing trend that we see as we move forward, and something we want to take into account with the next budget cycle, that, you know, with all of the construction that's still going on around Onslow County, and especially with what will be taking place over on the base, it's gonna be a tight market for that sort of thing, and so it's something we need to keep our eyes on.
Thank you, sir. Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to thank Ms. Rodriguez for coming tonight. Obviously, we, even though we don't have a lot of control over, over tobacco use, it's of concern to Onslow County and the health department, and they are working in as many ways as they can to, to work towards cessation of smoking. Also wanted to congratulate Mr. Howard Martin, citizen tonight, told me what a great job you were doing in your animal control services, and I want to thank you for that. I wanted to mention, I was hoping Ms. Becky Pollard would still be here, but our Register of Deeds a month or so ago, our Register of Deeds has been very innovative, and Register of Deeds is something that nobody pays a whole lot of attention to, but it's a very important function of Onslow County, recording land deeds and important records for all the public to see. And as, as one who sells houses, I, I see, I hear a lot, and you might have hear advertisements on TV, they're trying to sell you some kind of title, title lock insurance to keep people from stealing the title to your house. Well, our innovative Register of Deeds has a new program called Property Check, and you can go on the Register of Deeds website, and you can register your title for your properties, so that if anybody were to ever try to, to steal your title, you could get a notification directly from the Register of Deeds. So you don't need to pay somebody for that kind of service, because we have it available right here in Onslow County for absolutely no cost. So y'all visit, visit the Register of Deeds, you can go to OnslowCountyNC.gov, or deeds.onslowcountync.gov, and you can find that Property Check program on her website. Thank you, Becky Pollard, for that. Also wanted to thank the NAB vets for inviting me to their family day on September 21st. We had a good, good time that day. And in August, the Salvation Army of Jacksonville helped 2,354 of our citizens to the tune of Eighty-five of those people were military or dependents, and six were homeless. Salvation Army does that with no tax dollars. So thank you all for being here. I hope you have a great evening.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Howard, congratulations on getting the funding in this budget to expand our animal services shelter. I read in the paper that our cat house is full. We don't have no more room for no cats. Hurricane Florence still continues to strike blows on Onslow County. Barry can tell you back there, Barry Collins, our superintendent of schools, there, because we can't get construction workers, and we can't get people to do the work, or we can't get enough qualified bidders, there's two schools that we're building come in at $11 million over budget, and that's a hole that, that's dug that we're gonna have to fill some way or another. Now, we're only gonna be able to build one school this year, we're gonna build two schools, that's, and they overcrowded everywhere, but down in Stump Sound, Sneeze Ferry is the most overcrowded district that we have, and that's, I guess that's the first school we're gonna try to go ahead and get built this year, and then we'll work on the Catherine Lakeside School next year, hopefully, and, but I think it's interesting that the public ought to know that, you know, you can't, if you, if we try to find $11 million, I don't know where you're gonna find it at. I mean, as far as what we do in our budget, we were skimping last year on the county budget just in order to get the funding that we needed to, to fund the schools and the expansion that's happening with the schools, and the mandates that's come down the pipe for classroom extensions and stuff, and classroom reduction in size, so we've got a tough job to do next year and years to come with the school system. We're growing faster than we can get revenue to, to fund it, so I don't want it to be a surprise to anybody when you hear next year that we're looking for $11 million, because we, we're short $11 million this year. But we have to do what we gotta do to, to build and expand our animal services. I know that they popping at the seam over there, and we need, there's bigger and bigger and bigger demand for animal services, and Howard can tell you that with the amount of calls we all get, and I know he gets a lot of calls that we don't hear about, but that's a growing operation. But anyway, that being said, congratulations to the award recipients tonight, and I appreciate all of you being here and taking a part of this meeting, and the reports that we got from the health department, very good, very valuable information, and I'd like to thank David and their staff for putting all this together for us. Other than that, have a good evening, and I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sub move.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.